Good afternoon, I call our Commissioner briefing meeting to order. Our first agenda item is to review our agenda for this evening, are there any questions, comments that we need to discuss now before 5:00 PM? Alright, seeing none, we will move into our staff updates and the first is our Helene update from County Manager Avril Pinder, thank you Avril.
Thank you ma'am. As has been our custom since Helene landed, we have been providing an update at our briefings this afternoon. The subject matter experts that leads on these work groups would be the ones presenting the update and our first one is going to be housing and Matt Cable will lead us off on housing.
Good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide a more in-depth housing update. So what we wanted to share, you've regularly been receiving a lot of updates about FEMA programs, but we wanted to put this through the lens of the county's response and our partnership with FEMA across a number of fronts. As you are aware, we have seen increases regularly in the number of damage homes that have been reported. Last week, we passed a milestone that we hated to see but expected and are now at over 10,000 units which have been evaluated to have sustained some sort of damage, including 647 units with major damage and 342 units that are considered destroyed. And this is through FEMA's assessments, so these are the FEMA verified numbers. Our focus at the county with county staff, again through our relationships with our partners as well, has been to support Buncombe County residents moving towards more housing permanence, so those who have experienced displacement, getting them in a more permanent housing situation. Our approach has been multifaceted and includes short-term and long-term strategies and obviously we're working more on the shorter-term activities and at this point moving into intermediate and longer-term responses. These includes transitional sheltering assistance, coordination on home repair resources for houses that have been impacted, temporary housing solutions largely through our partners at FEMA as well as through other initiatives we've undertaken, short and long-term rentals, so working in the space to connect survivors with those resources, rental and mortgage assistance, and permanent housing solutions. So that's a newer focus for us, it's always been on the landscape, but an area we're beginning to work towards as we move into a more immediate and longer-term response. We're going to dig into a couple of programs and activity areas for you today, the first being transitional sheltering assistance, it's a major area of interest and there's been a lot of activity, extensions, notices around this particular area of work. So starting out with what the county is doing in this space, we have deployed our Tetra Tech Community Navigators to provide assistance in areas of outreach to guests that are in TSA hotels. Since December 14th, which is the first day we actually deployed those navigators into hotels, they have documented 347 interactions, meaning face-to-face connection with a survivor in terms of helping them to identify resources that might move them into more housing permanence. The way they've conducted that outreach is with door hangers, putting flyers under doors and then signs in hotels. More recently, as data has become available, we've actually been able to do direct and targeted outreach to folks that are slated for exit, as well as to households that will have continuing eligibility that might need referral to other resources. We have done code red messaging, so text and email alerts using the data that FEMA has been able to share with us under the agreement, so there's really targeted and direct outreach to those survivors in that situation. And recently, as the state has increased its disaster case management support locally, we have been making referrals to state North Carolina Emergency Management Disaster Case Managers that are housed at the DRC, so we have been making those connections as well. And that will be the longer-term case support, you know, as people move through various types of housing, we're using our community navigators to provide those resources now and connect them to that longer-term disaster case management. So as of Friday, the data that we had, and we get a weekly report on Friday as well as some intermittent updates, but this is the most comprehensive data that we have, there were 701 guests or Buncombe County residents in TSA hotels. Those are broken into two buckets, there are Buncombe County residents who are within Buncombe County hotels, there are also Buncombe County residents and households that are in hotels outside of the county. So you'll see the two different numbers, there are 556 Buncombe County households that are in a hotel in Buncombe County, there are 145 households that are outside of the county. There was a recent update, so we did update the slide for you this morning, dealing with eligibility and the time period for exit, so we want to provide some clarity there. On Friday, there was a notice to households about eligibility going forward, and on those dates, they would identify households that were not going to be eligible after that evaluation period. The first bucket on the 17th, they identified households that would continue to be eligible. And within Buncombe County, that's 448 households, and they would continue to have that eligibility through February the 8th, with an anticipated review again on January 31st, so this happens every two weeks that you'll be reviewed for eligibility, and so that group is cleared through February 8th, they'll be reviewed again on the 31st. There are 108 households that were identified as being ineligible, and there are a number of factors, and we've discussed those before for ineligibility, including that your home is now safe to return to, or that you have received rental assistance and moved into a unit and deployed that rental assistance, so that might be part of your ineligibility. So there are 108 of those households that received a notice that they would be ineligible. They now have three weeks from the notice of ineligibility to exit, so they will actually have TSA now through February the 8th, so their last night would be the 7th, checking out on the 8th. That's a change, so before the activities that happen over the weekend with an approval of that approach, they would normally be exiting on the 25th, so they now have an additional couple of weeks to work with case management for us to perform outreach and try to identify a more permanent solution for those exiting. I won't go through the details on those outside of the county, it's a very similar scenario, but just wanted to provide you those numbers in that context. Another big area, so transitional sheltering housing, it was kind of the first push, it made sure that people were sheltered and safe. There are a number of households that are in TSA that can move into direct housing, and so we wanted to talk a little bit about our temporary direct housing efforts. There are currently 105 households that are approved for temporary direct housing through FEMA. The numbers that are shown on the slide were as of Friday, our update as of Friday, they've actually been updated this morning, so I'm going to share those numbers with you just to show the movement that's happened in the last couple of days. Temporary units that are licensed in now, instead of 27, we're at 35 units, that has increased by eight in the last few days. Direct lease licensed in, we're up to 12 instead of nine, so a couple of additional direct leases have occurred. Temporary units in progress, so this is a decrease, right, so we had 39 in progress, they've made progress on those, so we're now at 30 that are currently in progress, we expect that number will increase in the coming days. And then the solutions not yet determined, we were at 30, we're now at 28, that is a not-yet-determined number. Not-yet-determined really is a result of the fact that FEMA continues to work with those households on what solution that they prefer and makes sense for those families. So it might be that a private site was their first preference, they've identified that that won't work with their unit, and so what is the next option that makes sense for them? We also, as you'll recall, in November brought to the board and the board approved amendments to zoning regulations to facilitate temporary solutions, so in addition to the permits that have been pulled by FEMA, and we've had 65 as of last week, those numbers will be updated soon, a total of 183 permits. So in addition to what we've allowed FEMA to permit and they've been doing, individual households have identified their own temporary solutions as well, including travel trailers, potentially manufactured homes on their own property. So we have 183 permits in total with 65 of those being FEMA, so it represents the efforts of this board to create an opportunity for households to pursue their own solutions. And then the last area that we wanted to cover was rental assistance, and so you've seen rental assistance numbers in the last few briefing updates that showed a much lower number of households approved for rental assistance, that's actually escalated. Recently, we now have 656 households that have received FEMA rental assistance, in part, that's the result of the efforts of FEMA to do outreach and ensure that people understood that that was an opportunity they could pursue. Rental assistance is really where a household can identify its own rental opportunity and seek a lease, and then FEMA will provide funding for that, up to 200% of fair market rent. So that is an option that folks are pursuing, we are working at the county, county staff to develop communication, to promote platforms that are helping render survivors connect with rental opportunities that are out there, as well as to share information about FEMA rental assistance and general rental assistance with landlords and owner hosts that might be interested in helping displaced households find a rental unit. As you're aware, the county did provide through ARPA funding, direct funds for rental assistance that the Economic Services Division has been deploying. In addition, we have been doing direct work with nonprofit providers that have established platforms, there are three that we are currently engaged with, the first being Thrive Asheville who seeks to connect voucher holders with units that accept vouchers. The second being Asheville Buncombe Community Land Trust, they established their own program, they're actually connecting renters survivors and accompanying some of that with rental assistance through their own funds, so they have a platform to connect those individuals. And then the STR Alliance actually established its own platform to try to connect owner hosts and potential renters that were looking for shorter-term rental solutions. So we've been meeting regularly with those groups, to date, they have successfully connected and housed 34 households that were displaced with two additional that are currently in process, and those numbers are updated regularly. Four of those units were through Thrive Asheville, so connecting four voucher holders to new rentals, and then the other 30 have been through the Asheville Buncombe Community Land Trust. We are working with STR Alliance, we expect that they have created connections, but they don't currently have a tracking mechanism, so they're working to identify how many connections have actually been successfully made through that platform. And then just an overview of our general, an additional response coordination, we really have been working a lot to develop resource guides in coordination with CAPE and our nonprofit providers to ensure that survivors have information on repair providers in our area, so we have an existing group of home repair providers that we work with regularly, providing those resources, as well as information about rental mortgage and utility assistance. So in the housing space, we talk about the direct impact to the housing stock and the households that were in those housing, in those housing units, but there was also an economic impact from lost wages and other issues that were created by the storm that then impact housing stability, so we're trying to make sure that those resource connections are happening. We've also been taking those resources and making sure that we are getting them in the hands of folks that are doing the direct outreach, so sharing those with community navigators, our disaster case managers from the state, the various community partners, so making sure that each of those kind of siloed providers know about the other opportunities that are out there, if they are approached or ask about those kinds of resources, and then obviously to our residents and the public directly. Another area that you've heard about, and it's just an additional work that we continue to be involved in, is providing support when shelters were closing, so as different transitions of shelter have happened, making sure that we're providing support and providing those that are exiting shelter with a more permanent solution at exit. Currently, we are beginning to undertake consideration of longer-term solutions because most of the other responses are temporary, and that's where we would be at this point in recovery, is identifying those short-term solutions, but recognizing that longer-term solutions, given the volume of damage and destruction, will be necessary in order to maintain a housing stock sufficient for our existing residents. I am happy to answer any questions.
Hi Matt, just one question, and you were alluding to this, so you were saying that you're making sure that you're communicating with community partners, and is there somewhere, like when we're out and we get questions from some of the local nonprofits or other folks working in the community, that we can point them somewhere to where there's all this information around the community navigators, the state disaster case management, and the various resources, so that that helps them when they're out working and helping others in the community?
Sure, so we have a number of like individual one-sheet guides that we've created that we'd be happy to share. The biggest actual document that is out there is a resource guide that the CAPE team has been putting together, we'd be happy to get you the link for that, so it's a kind of comprehensive list, so it includes housing and other resources that are available. We've been putting that in the hands of case managers and community navigators as well, and it's a pretty comprehensive guide, in addition to those kind of really detailed and specific one-pagers about rental assistance or mortgage assistance, so we're happy to provide you with those documents and where you can resource those.
That's on our website.
The full resource guide, not yet.
And is there, speaking of that, is there any kind of tracker as well around the housing? Because I know we've done that before, we've done it with the ARPA, and I think I've seen it with some other things, but as far as that you're keeping that updated so that we're able to refer to that around the housing needs during this recovery?
We'll talk a little bit about that when her turn comes, but that is coming, that resource is coming, but I think that's in Stacy's update about the hub, that is coming.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick question, I was, Matt, thank you so much for your work and for this information. So I was excited to see that Governor Stein's request for an extension of TSA benefits for an additional two months, looks like it's going to, it has been granted, does that trickle down to the county yet, are we expected to be able to extend the TSA grant, TSA assistance based on Governor Stein's request to FEMA?
So there's an initial like period of TSA that's covered, and what that has done is created the additional time at the back end. The eligibility cycle will continue, it just means that we have additional months of eligibility that are extended beyond that initial end of March period. So we'll continue to have these kind of regular two-week evaluation cycles, but it does provide additional timeframe, that's not atypical in a disaster response, and what they're really evaluating is where are we in the disaster, how successful have people been in identifying a more permanent solution than TSA?
And then, I'm also just curious, for folks who have lost TSA, who have been deemed ineligible prior to the 21 additional days, is kind of a heads-up for folks to move out, is it retroactive at all for folks who are now, who have already been rolled off of TSA, or it's just for folks going forward, they now have the ability to have additional time to secure other housing?
And that would be probably a better question for FEMA specifically, this is, again, relatively new information, so we're assessing it based on that 17th exit date and our understanding of what's happening with that population, I'm not sure if FEMA can provide any additional guidance, because again, it's relatively new.
Okay, yeah, I totally understand, it's moving quickly, so, thank you.
Thanks a bunch Matt, we appreciate it, thanks for all your good work.
Next is Kristy Smith on debris.
Good afternoon Commissioners, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update of all things debris in the county since Hurricane Helene. Okay, so first thing, we call them buckets, the debris bucket is right-of-way, so currently our contractor is collecting right-of-way debris throughout the county. The numbers you see on the screen were as of 1/16, 2,025, 752,698 cubic yards of vegetative and construction and demolition debris, 57,160 tons of soil. The Corps contractor is nearing first pass completion in all zones except for D and E, they are still assessing first pass in the hardest-hit areas, zones D and E. Just so you can know what they've done over the weekend and the holiday, as of today, 797,631 cubic yards of debris have been collected and 61,684 tons of soil. What we do want to remind everybody, our residents, that right-of-way debris collection is ongoing, so if you see an opportunity to put things in the right-of-way and you still have storm debris, please do so if you're able, just keep in mind there's a 10-foot radius reach for those trucks on the side of the road, so try to get it that close, and then be aware of overhead power lines or cable lines, if you're able to not put debris under those, that helps the contractor, if that's the only option you got, then please feel free to put them there. And the next type of debris will be the private property debris removal. We have a lot of information about this, it's a very popular program, we've had 2,160 applications submitted as of January 17th, 72.4% of those are unincorporated Buncombe County, 20% City of Asheville, and a little over 3% in the town of Black Mountain. Other townships in the county have gone their own route and are not using our services, so that's why the report is specific to these three locations. We have 192 applications for demolition, and 23 of those are from commercial properties. I know that's a hot topic out in our community, I do have some additional information on the demolition, there are 23 commercial applications for demolition, City of Asheville has 14, Town of Black Mountain one, and unincorporated Buncombe County eight, as of today, five of those eight are in Swananoa. We have been in conversations with Corps of Engineers, FEMA, county's consultant Tetra Tech, and then our own internal permits and inspections and air quality to work on the demolition piece when this comes online with the PPDR program. Let's see, we have 736 site inspections that have been completed, we're near 700 applications as of today that have been submitted to FEMA, so they can continue their review, and we sure hope to expect cleanup in February next month. Why does it take so long? Part of the PPDR program is, it's a very lengthy application process to make sure we're accounting for, you know, owners of homes and certifying all of that, and then once the packets get sent to FEMA and the Corps of Engineers, they have their own review, each property goes through an environmental and historical cultural preservation review, so that can be lengthy as well. So we work with them continuously to keep that process moving and provide them any extra information they need as it arises. So far, they've got everything they need from us. So let's see, the next one is title property and waterway debris. We have got some movement on title property this week, we're gonna hopefully by the end of January see some movement in getting title property towed out of the right-of-way. We are targeting right-of-way title property currently, and then get that out of the way so we have room to get these pieces out of the water and then put into the right-of-way. We have contracted with local towing companies for these vehicles and vessels and designing a process that aligns with state statutes and local ordinances. Title's a little bit different than other debris, it is a little bit more lengthy of a process, and that's essentially and that's essentially because a title to something gives you the legal rights, ownership control, and responsibility over that property. So there has to be a process to identify and notify the owner before it is disposed of. So for our purposes, title property includes, what is not limited to, automobiles, vehicles, boats, campers, tractors, tractor trailers, shipping containers, and mobile homes. And then waterway, we expect to begin February 2025, obviously, sorry, I keep saying the year. The Corps has released the RFP for removal of debris. We hope to have that move in February as well. The process for that same review, that environmental historic preservation review, is going parallel with the procurement RFPs, so we hope to get some movement on that fairly quickly next month and keep you updated as that goes. And I believe that's all for me. Happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. On the private property debris removal slide, can you talk us through that process of, for commercial property to apply for site inspections? Just through that process, a number of us were in Swananoa on Friday at the Chamber of Commerce's event, and that continued to be an issue of concern that was elevated a number of times was the commercially, commercial property removal. So helping us understand that, so as those issues arise, we can speak to those with those residents would be really helpful.
Absolutely. Swananoa has been a target for us and Tetra Tech. They've been canvassing pretty heavily there since Christmas. Over 300 flyers and door hangers have been put out. They've knocked on businesses or talked to residents trying to get them to sign up. We would love to see more activity from commercial businesses in Swananoa. We keep trying, we're not sure why we're not getting bigger numbers, but please refer them to the One Buncombe phone number, or we also have the Tetra Tech intake centers. Local small businesses are eligible. The bigger box stores, you know, the corporate level, they would not be. The assumption is they have insurance for those things, but local small businesses, we encourage them to apply, we want them to apply if they want that assistance. So we do have the intake centers, we have the DDC at the mall, and, sorry, it's DRC. And then the One Buncombe and our website, so we want them to sign up.
Just remind us of the intake centers too, so we can make sure that information's out there.
Sure, we have the East Asheville Library, the Black Mountain Library, the Asheville Mall, Barnardsville Fire Department, Bee Tree Substation. Thank you for the help.
Every five days a week, the intake centers are, do we know?
Yes, they're usually in line with the library schedule, so I think seven days a week as long as the library is open. I think they're closed Sundays and Tuesdays, but I can certainly update you on that.
We'll get an update to be sure.
Yes.
And send that out for confirmation.
Okay, sorry, I don't have that handy.
Any other questions for Kristi? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Matt Evans on public assistance PA.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Matt Evans, I work in finance and I'm overseeing county's FEMA public assistance process. So with federally declared incidents, FEMA in partnership with the state of North Carolina opens grant funding to assist communities with emergency work, which is costs associated with debris removal in response, and permanent work, which are caused to restore infrastructure. The FEMA public assistance process isn't a new concept to the county, but we certainly haven't seen one on this scale. At a high level, FEMA public assistance is broken into two categories: emergency work and permanent work. Emergency work relates to debris removal and emergency protective measures. Emergency protective measures include activities responding to an event, which is a wide bucket, but covers certain portions of salaries, which is mainly overtime and benefits. And that's the case for Buncombe County. So equipment usage, think vehicles and generators, and certain supplier costs. Emergency protective measure costs that we saw at the county that will be included in our funding requests include emergency operations center costs, potable water costs, notably at the detention center and various EOC locations, EOC, Emergency Operations Center, costs related to operating the community care stations, shelters and warehouses, search and rescue costs, and I said before, various overtime and benefits related to the county-wide response. Permanent work deals with infrastructure costs, which I'll speak more on the next slide. FEMA public assistance policy calls for emergency work to be complete in six months from the declaration date and permanent work to be completed in 18 months. However, extensions may be granted. The county is working on formal extension requests to the state of North Carolina related to debris. So I'll get into the timeline in just a second, but you just heard Kristi say February 25, right? So six months would be March 28, so how would we do all that debris in one month, right? So the county's been working with Tetra Tech to inventory all the projects that will be included in our submission to FEMA. These projects include the debris work and the emergency protective measures I mentioned before, as well as permanent work for various county-maintained access roads, county buildings and park facilities. At the time of this presentation, our project list, referred to formally by FEMA as the damage inventory, includes 11 roads, most of which are access roads for towers, 15 county buildings, and 16 park facility locations where two, which is Owen Park and Carpen Park, were destroyed. Three had major damages, including Alexander River Park, Collier Cove Park, and Hominy River Park. The rest had significant or limited damages. I understand as an employee of Buncombe County and as a member of the community that there is a lot of interest in getting damaged parks opened as soon as possible, but we are required by FEMA to follow a certain process and timelines in order to claim assistance. I'll speak more to this on a future slide. I'd also like to point out that insurance does play a part in all of this. Our risk manager has made a claim for all insured county property affected by the storm. I will note that certain property isn't insured, such as county parks, right? So like land is typically not an insurable item, though structures at the parks would have been insured. We will include all the insurance information related to the damages across these roads, county buildings, vehicles, and parks facilities. FEMA funding will hopefully offer us additional support where insurance may not cover all of it. Here are some slides, here the slide shows some pictures of pre-storm Owen Park and post-storm Owen Park. And as I will discuss on the next slide, it's important that we go through each step of the FEMA public assistance process to ensure the county gets as much assistance as possible. Part of this includes scheduling site visits with FEMA and accurately cataloging all damages, which takes time. Think about an insurance claim on your home, right, it takes time. The FEMA public assistance process is very formalized and structured with key milestones that each applicant must meet, and Buncombe County has met all milestones to date and is on track to meet all upcoming milestones. I want to spend some time talking about the major milestones. Though we know the storm took place on September 27, the emergency was federally declared on September 28. The county had 30 days from the declaration date to make its request for public assistance. The request for public assistance was completed on October 5, 2024. This request triggers a set of events which I will discuss. In the early days of the response, the county acted quickly to secure a vendor for debris removal. At that time, based on vendor estimates, the county was looking at spending nearly $68 million on debris removal. FEMA public assistance allows applicants to request expedited funding at 50% of a project estimate for emergency work. On October 17, 2024, the county worked with FEMA to complete an expedited funding request for close to $68 million, of which the county was granted approximately $32 million. Since then, the county has ended its contract with the original vendor and the Army Corps of Engineers has taken over certain components of debris removal, reducing the cost to the county. We are actively working with our state partners to finalize the amount of the $32 million that the county will need for debris removal. The county had its exploratory call with FEMA on November 22, 2024. The purpose of this call was to meet key personnel, understand expectations from each party, mainly FEMA, the state, and Buncombe County, and to get an understanding of key future meetings, such as our recovery scoping meeting. The county had its recovery scoping meeting on December 3, 2024. This meeting started the clock for the county to submit its list of projects to FEMA, the damage inventory. Units typically have 60 days from a recovery scoping meeting to submit its list of projects to FEMA, but the deadline was extended to March 3, 2025. The county is currently finalizing its list of projects that make up the damage inventory. As I discussed previously, we have projects related to emergency work, including debris and emergency protective measures. We also have permanent work projects that span across the roads, the buildings, and the parks. It is essential that we get our list of damages accurate before submitting our project list. We feel confident we are closing in on the permanent work portion of the project list and will begin submitting those to FEMA soon. That will allow us to schedule site inspections. Site inspections are a critical component in FEMA's funding process and must take place. We hear that there is a great deal of site inspections happening across the region, so we're going to prioritize submitting our permanent work projects first. We will then submit the remaining portion of our project list, which will be the debris and emergency protective measures, well before the deadline. So we'll get that in there before March 3. Lastly, when we submit our finalized project list to FEMA, we'll begin submitting all the supporting documentation. Supporting documentation plays a large role in the success of receiving funding. Our team has worked hard to build an end-in mind process to ensure that we have what we need. This includes substantiation that we followed all county policies, including personnel and procurement, and that we have tied all submitted expenses to the incident, per FEMA's public assistance policy document, which is about 500 pages long. I will say that we've been incredibly fortunate to have so many folks in the room with us since the early days of the response to help us navigate this. We've published a spending and obligations dashboard for the public. Amounts on this dashboard relate to the event, and we are seeking either insurance reimbursement and/or FEMA reimbursement. At the moment, the dashboard is updated monthly after the accounting team closes the period. Any questions?
I got a question related to public assistance. My understanding, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, but that FEMA authorizes through the public assistance program as well as the hazard mitigation program, they will fund some level of resilience on top of the just repair of public facilities. And they'll pay for enhancements, that sort of thing. And I'm also aware of a bulletin from FEMA, I think it stems from the Inflation Reduction Act, that they'll actually go as far as retrofitting buildings to be net zero energy underneath that program. And so I guess, I guess I'm just curious if staff or Tetra Tech has looked into that sort of thing, and you're planning that in the, kind of the application process for?
Absolutely, so the FEMA public assistance process is a part of a funding stack that we're looking at to address the response to the hurricane, right? There's a huge list of funding opportunities. What we're trying to do is vet each funding opportunity to see where it best fits, and you're right on, the whole idea is to build back better than it was before. It's a pretty convoluted process, happy to share whatever we can. We're actively working on that, we have a meeting with Tetra Tech within the next week to understand the different mitigation fundings.
Okay, can you just give us like a high-level example of like, one of our parks was damaged? We're gonna at least build it back to the way it was, but there's some enhancements we can do to make it better? Is there an example that comes to mind?
I think a common one is if we had a structure on the park, they would build it, they would set it up higher than the flood level would be, I mean, that's a common one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Stacy Wood on communication and public engagement. Lillian is gonna do that.
Surprise, I'm Lillian Govis, I'm the Director of Communications and Public Engagement. Three updates for you before I touch on my slides. Disaster debris intake programs, Black Mountain Library, Fairview Library, Swananoa Bee Tree Substation, Barnardsville Fire Station. Those are all Tuesday through Saturday, 8 to 5. And then the one that's at the Asheville Mall co-located, that one's Monday through Saturday. So all of those hours you can access at buncomready.org. That's kind of our emergency preparation site in response, and so buncomready.org will be your resource for that. It's also your resource for your resource guide, I just got word that that went up late on Friday. So that is available at buncomready.org. And there was a third thing I was gonna update you on, and I've forgotten it. So in terms of communication and engagement, we are going to continue our briefings Wednesdays at 11:00 a.m. We're still seeing a lot of traction on those. One of our most recent briefings had 7,000 viewers on it. So we know that we are providing information to our community that they are still absorbing and utilizing and is benefiting them. We are going to continue distributing that information also via our text messaging and email platforms. I would be remiss if I didn't say that you can sign up for that right now by texting BC Alert to 99411, and we will get you in the system. We also have seen our social media following grow exponentially. Now, just because you have a lot of followers doesn't mean that you're gonna get in front of them because the algorithms don't always play in our favor, which is why we've got folks who are really working on creating engaging content to help people so that we're watching those engagement rates as our followers grow. Our news stories related to the storm, the Register of Deeds website, and our GIS pages are the three pages that are getting the most traction, the website traffic every single day. And so we know that's information that folks want front and center. I was just talking to one of the folks in our GIS department. We're gonna add some new layers. The last time they did the flyover, it was cloudy, and so we're gonna have some better layers available to folks on our GIS pages. So really tracking that to make sure that we're getting the information to people that they are looking for when they're coming to the county. In the month of February, we're gonna begin our community resource road shows. These are really important. What we saw with AV Tech's Resource Fair was it was really highly attended. It was also really well-attended among people who don't speak English as a first language. And so what we're looking to do with our roadshow or our resource fairs is to take those into a much smaller footprint. So we'll be going to four locations, Barnardsville Fire, Owen High School, Reynolds High School, and the Lester Community Center. And we will have not just our partners, like the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, obviously FEMA, but also folks in the county. Permits is a big one. Drew has already said that he's gonna bring the Register of Deeds mobile unit, which I think is just him, and print out birth certificates and marriage licenses for anyone who lost theirs in the storm, he can do that at no cost. So making sure that what we have available there, using that public health idea of a no-wrong-door approach, you don't have to know that we do this and the state does that. You just need to show up at this, one of these events, it's a drop-in format, and we will connect you to those resources that can help you as you and your family and your neighbors recover from the storm. And finally, we will be launching a new recovery engagement site, and this will be housed on our public input portal. We have talked in the past about how we will be undergoing a website transition from our HTML-based website to a content management system. That's still going to happen this summer. So by building this site out on our public input page, we'll be able to have this as a steady resource while we undergo that whole website transition this summer. But this will be where folks can get all of the information about those recovery support functions along with presentations just like this one. If you're just really hoping to go and watch it again, you'll be able to access all of that in one place. And it reminds me of the third item that I wanted to make sure I let y'all know about, requests around data. In the appendix of these presentations, you'll see data galore. So while we don't have the dashboard up quite yet, you can go in there and read all, your heart's content on data that is in the appendix of these presentations. Questions?
Many thanks to you and your team, thanks, Lillian.
Thank you.
And Rachel is on her way, she's our last topic this afternoon on disaster recovery contract.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brenna Minor with Tetra Tech is going to share with us about the activities they have been undertaking and the deliverables they've brought forward in their time with us. Quick introduction, Tetra Tech is the firm that we hired as our disaster recovery contractor. We opened a bid of- We opened a bid very early in the days after the tropical storm hit, knowing that we would need both specialized expertise and more assistance in terms of legwork in navigating all of these various topics that we're bringing in front of you. We went through that bid process and selected the firm, Tetra Tech, and entered into a master service agreement to engage with this firm over a three-year period with additional annual extensions available. And the method of working with them is through task orders. So our very first task order was negotiated and launched in the late October, which means we're coming up on the end of that 90-day period. It's carrying us through late January. And so as we prepare to bring you a plan for the next task order, wanted to invite the firm to share a little bit about what they've been up to so far. And Brenna had planned to be here in person, and as a result of the weather, there's snow in Texas, so they are joining us, she is joining us virtually. So hopefully, you'll hear her coming in via Zoom just in a moment. I see a picture on the screen, Brenna.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for the introduction, Rachel. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. And if you don't have the ability to advance slides from where you are, just call for the next slide, and I'll move it along.
Perfect. I will do that. Thank you so much, and good afternoon to the Commission. Like Rachel said, my name is Brenna Minor, and I am a Director of Recovery Programs for Tetra Tech. Happy to be here to give you an update on the task order that we've been implementing for the last 90 days. I think this update, along with the excellent and comprehensive reports you just heard, is gonna give a really clear picture of what we've been up to. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. So our team initially worked with county leadership and staff in late October, like Rachel described, to identify the tasks that were going to be most needed in the county for the next 90 days, and where Tetra Tech could provide expertise, or support, or additional staff to accomplish those tasks. So this slide illustrates the eight areas of our task order that we identified in those meetings. You're familiar with some of them from the presentations that were just given. And in the interest of time, I'll kind of introduce what each of these are as we go through the next slides. So with that, go to the next one. So now, I'm just gonna highlight some of the accomplishments within each of these tasks, you know, from the last several weeks of work. Starting out with the Community Navigation Services, which Matt Cable just mentioned to you all, through that task, our service provided six staff, as well as some technical assistance and supervisory support, with those six staff members being on the ground in the community and really focused on talking and reaching out to the harder-to-reach populations within the county and helping to connect them with available resources. So through that effort, the team who's been doing that work have reached out in person to nearly 3,000 survivors at various locations throughout the county, some of that at the DRC, but also at grocery stores, churches, and other locations that they've been able to go to. As Matt mentioned in his report, the service has also transitioned a little bit over the last several weeks to support the transitional sheltering assistance sites. Our community navigators have been able to, I think, provide the county with a little more visibility and hands-on interaction with some of the residents there, and making sure that they have the information they need about other resources available to them, as well as ensuring that they're on the right track to move into the next phase of their housing plan. In our next task, we were working with the Emergency Operations Center and the warehouse. Our team members really provided staff augmentation there, supporting efforts such as providing additional support to the Public Information Office, working in the warehouse, and then items in the EOC, like planning and supporting the documentation unit. All right. And then you heard Kristi just give a great report about debris, ongoing debris work in the county. Tetra Tech has been working on the private property debris removal program. I just checked our stats, and as of a little earlier today, we were over 2,200 applications received for that program. Of those, 578 have actually signed their right-of-entry forms, had a site inspection, and those packets have been submitted to FEMA and the Army Corps. So those will be ready to begin the removal process very soon. Also, as part of that program, we've operated a debris-specific call center line within the One Bunkham Call Center, as well as operating those five intake locations in the county that Kristi and Lillian both mentioned. All right, and we'll go to the next slide. All right, well, Matt just gave an excellent overview of FEMA Public Assistance, but our team has been working very closely with him on the process involved there in seeking reimbursement and doing projects to repair county infrastructure. Our team completed damage assessments for county facilities back in December. We've also facilitated some of these calls with FEMA, and then we'll just be continuing to guide the county through that PA reimbursable activity work, as well as potential projects that will go into construction in the near future. And so those projects can include those improved or mitigation projects as well, and like Matt mentioned, we'll be giving some training about some of the mitigation opportunities that are available, both through public assistance and the differences between the public assistance mitigation and the hazard mitigation grant program. So that brings me to our floodplain management team. That team has been providing subject matter expertise and support to the Planning Office and the County Floodplain Administrator. This team completed more than 1,400 inspections for properties that were identified as being in the special flood hazard area. I believe Nate Pennington gave a great overview of this at the last Commission briefing, but the county is a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, and so doing these inspections is a very necessary part of maintaining that status. So we were successful in doing those inspections, and the next step is sending out letters to community members who's homes are considered substantially damaged. So I believe the first batch of letters went out, and more are expected to go out this week. And in addition, we've recently added in a service of providing elevation survey services in the community, and so that just started in the last two weeks. Moving on to our housing recovery support function and our long-term recovery support. So through those tasks, we've provided technical assistance to the Housing RSF. That has included working with them and reviewing the 90-day action plan that they're working on. We have also worked with that team to help streamline some of the reporting and data that's coming in from various sources. So we're looking forward to continuing that work and assisting with the housing dashboard. Recently, in the last week, we've also been working with county leadership and staff to develop priorities and a strategy for helping the county secure upcoming CDBG disaster recovery funding. And so that funding is going to come either through the state or through the city of Asheville. And I think the county staff have done a great job of, you know, getting together lists of projects and programs that are much needed in the county and finding a strategy to use those CDBG disaster recovery dollars to meet the unmet need in the community. So, next slide. So on this slide, I wanted to do just a quick recap of some of the goals that we have this week as we're closing out the first 90 days of this task order. You know, for example, we are continuing to send packets to FEMA and Army Corps for the private property debris removal program. We are working with the housing team. We've started a permanent housing work group that can be available for discussions of permanent housing and CDBG DR in the future, as well as, you know, finishing up just refinement of some of the data that we've seen at the county. So on the next slide, in closing, we're now working with the county to discuss continuation of some of these tasks that are ongoing, as well as additional tasks that have been identified through this recovery process. And I'm happy to say that from a financial standpoint, we project that at the end of this 90-day period, we'll have expended approximately 60% of the original budget, so we'll be able to use some of that cushion for the ongoing tasks as we move into the next phase of our work. So with that, I thank you all for your time, and happy to answer any questions, and I'll turn it back to Rachel.
Thank you, Brenna. So for the Board of Commissioners, we wanted to make you aware that we are intending to bring you a budget amendment in February, so that we can enter into and extend a new task order with Tetra Tech. We're in the process now of identifying which tasks may have been completed or may not no longer be needed to carry forward into our next period of time, which we're looking at right now, looking at through the end of June, and what potential tasks we may need to add in, really trying to make sure we're prioritizing that which we don't have the specialized technical expertise in-house, and most particularly looking at trying to prioritize that which has a funding source, a reimbursement source, which has a reasonable likelihood of being able to cover the costs, so that really little-to-no costs are being borne that would be expected to stay in the general fund long-term.
Thank you, Rachel and Brenna. Are there questions?
I got a quick one. For Brenna, I guess, related to the damaged property inventory in the floodplain. I would be super curious if you do have any data that might show what types of structures were damaged in the floodplain that meet modern flood standards versus those that don't, which structures were damaged and were sitting outside of the floodplain versus inside the floodplain? That sort of numeric data as it relates to damaged property would be really interesting for me to see. Thank you.
Okay. Great. We'll work on getting that for you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rachel. She did mention staff is working on the CBD, the plan for the CBD.
CBD.
CR. And when's the expectation that then you'll be bringing that to the Commission for us to be able to take a look at that?
At this time, the status of Community Development Block Grant CDBG DR Disaster Recovery is that Bunkham County has not been awarded an allocation. So we've seen that the city of Asheville, because of their status as an entitlement jurisdiction, has a dollar amount. I don't know if they have that award documentation or just the award announcement. Same goes with the state of North Carolina. So right now, it's in an informal status, where we are putting together information about Bunkham County's experience with federal awards and ability and capacity to carry out these types of projects, and bringing forward potential ideas of what projects could potentially, could shape up like, to convey to the state that we have projects in our queue that are, to use the term shovel-ready, and could begin using these block grant funds quickly, and that we also have the capacity to meet all of the things that would be required, like coming to the Board of Commissioners, like doing a needs assessment, getting community engagement for additional projects. So I don't have a timeline on the plan. I think it will very much depend on an award, which would start that clock.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yeah, in regards to the CDBG funds Asheville's receiving, do we know if the county's gonna be assisting with the dispersal of those funds?
TBD.
TBD.
One point of conversation that I have heard that we're waiting clarification on, as an example, if Bunkham County has property that is owned by the county and physically located within the city, how would, which CDBG funds would best be matched there? And then you also heard Brenna say that in terms of pass-through, one feasible possibility would be to have Bunkham County funds pass through the city. So I think at this point, it's throwing all of the ideas on the table, talking with the incoming administration at the state level, and understanding which offices are gonna manage the fund, and kind of see what sticks.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
That is the end of the Helene update.
Thank you, Avril. Are there any final questions regarding the update? All right. Then our next item is our internal audit update, and Rob Hartman is with us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rob Hartman. I am the Director of Internal Audit here at Bunkham County. I started here back in July of 2024, so relatively new here, and obviously Helene kind of impacted my work a little bit. We'll get into that a little bit. But I wanted to give you all an update on where internal audits at, what work we've done, and all of that for you. So first up, some key takeaways. We're kind of building a foundation here in internal audit as we move forward with our audit work. Additionally, we've completed some audit work product, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And I want to talk about the impact that Hurricane Helene had on the internal audit shop, as well as what our next steps for the rest of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year are going to be. So first up, building the foundation. We are working on updating the audit charter. It was approved this morning at the Audit Committee meeting. We'll be moving away from the generally accepted government auditing standards, the sort of yellow book, if you've heard that term before, and moving to the Global Internal Audit Standards, the sort of red book, if you've heard that term before. The Global Internal Audit Standards are made for internal audit shops, and so we felt that was more applicable for moving forward for internal audit rather than the government standards. This audit charter will ensure compliance with those IIA standards, which went into effect of January 1st, 2025. Additionally, I'm drafting an audit manual, working on making sure that we have our process documentation in place, so that way, as we do our audits, we can make sure that they're done in a consistent and appropriate manner with the standards that we're following. As far as our internal audit work product, we completed a county-wide risk assessment and developed an internal audit plan. That plan had to be adjusted in the wake of Hurricane Helene, as you can imagine. Additionally, we completed fieldwork for one special project, and we'll be presenting that report at the next Audit Committee meeting and issuing a copy to the County Commission as well, once we finish with that. Our audit plan for fiscal year '25, which was approved this morning at the Audit Committee meeting, will consist of a P-card audit, kind of focusing on what our policies and procedures look like surrounding P-cards, as well as looking at some of the spending that we did both pre and post-Helene, to get an idea if we're complying with our own rules, as well as state and federal guidelines. Additionally, I'll be completing another risk assessment this year to develop an audit plan for next fiscal year as well. Additionally, I want to talk a little bit about what Hurricane Helene looked like for internal audit. Like most folks in the county who are not already working in emergency response, I was assigned, as well as my internal auditor, to work in the county distribution warehouses. Tetra Tech talked about how they're now taking over the warehouses. It was when Tetra Tech came in that I was able to leave the warehouse and kind of get back to my audit work. So I was in there for quite some time. That leads to some independence considerations. Something to consider for the Commissioners is that if there's any audit coverage required for the warehousing process, that would need to be contracted by a third party. I would be unable to complete that audit work because I did that work in the warehouse. Additionally, we have one employee besides myself at the moment. We were trying to hire another position before the storm hit, and were unable to complete that search, and that employee has announced that she would like to retire at the end of January. And so between that and the hiring freeze, internal audit is now down to a staff of one, so it'll just be me for the time being, until that hiring freeze is lifted. Also, during Helene, there was a reevaluation of risk, both by internal audit and Bunkham County management broadly, which kind of impacted what projects were able to do and kind of, you know, changed the landscape in that way. So next step for fiscal year 2025, once the hiring freeze ends, we intend to try and fill both of those open internal audit positions, as well as work on our process documentation. Like I said, I'm in the process of drafting an audit manual, as well as some other process documentation, to make sure that our audits are done in a consistent manner appropriate with the standards. We'll also complete the audit work that was approved by the Audit Committee, namely the risk assessment and the P-card audit. And then also later this year, I'll be presenting- And then also later this year, I'll be presenting at an industry conference, the Association of Local Government Auditors, on kind of how to do a fraud investigation. It gives discount on a registration, which is nice, and also elevates the status of Buncombe County's internal audit department. For fiscal year 2026, I'll be evaluating our software needs to see if it makes sense to continue with the current suite of software that we have, or if it makes sense to move to a different software. There's potentially some cost savings involved if we do that. So I'll be evaluating that in next fiscal year. Additionally, developing a departmental strategic plan, this is something that's required by the IIA standards, and so it helps make sure that we can sort of move forward in the right direction as a shop. And then also, if we get those auditors hired, work on training those auditors. It takes some time to get a new auditor kind of fresh to fully trained. That is all I had as far as an update for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have for me.
Are there any questions for Rob?
I do have one question, just to, I don't sit on the, I have not sat on the audit committee, but I'm curious, is there any substantive change in standard between going from the generally accepted government auditing standard practices to the global internal audit standards? Or is this just kind of a procedural technicalities thing? Help me understand that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, originally I had a slide in here talking about that, but I thought it might be a little bit dense in case you all weren't super, super interested in that. But the main differences are that the IIA standards, like I said, are developed for internal auditing, and they focus on adding value through projects like internal audits and consultation projects, whereas the yellow book standards are much more focused on how to perform a specific kind of single audit is the term. And so those are generally meant for external auditors, and so this kind of allows us to add value in a better way. So one of the things that is valuable to management is kind of offering consultation projects. So if a department is working on implementing a new process, we can go in and provide input from a risk standpoint, whereas under the yellow book standards, we'd generally be discouraged from doing that. So it allows us to do a little bit more work while still maintaining our independence. External auditors, you wouldn't want them kind of coming in and offering consulting services, because then their audit report wouldn't be worth as much. Whereas internal audit, we're able to still maintain that independence throughout my reporting relationship to the audit committee.
Perfect. It sounds like we're picking the more thereof of the two options there.
Any other questions? All right. Great job. Thanks, Rob.
All right. Thank you so much. Hope you have a great one.
All right. Our next agenda item is the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization Memorandum of Understanding, and William Hyatt is with us. And Tristan Winkler joining you?
Not unless you want him to.
Okay. Tristan from the MPO is also joining us. Maybe not at the podium.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, Tristan is here, should there be any questions that I can't answer, which are probably a few. Just a quick overview, the French Broad River MPO, for words' sake, I'm just going to call it the MPO from here on, is the organizing body in the Asheville area for transportation projects and funding. It is currently governed under a MOU from twelve years ago and has recently been updated. The proposed changes involve primarily membership to the board and to the staff level technical coordinating committee, as well as the addition of a cost sharing section and a update to NC DOT approved formatting. The current and future board makeup is made entirely of elected officials from the four counties that make up the MPO. That would be Buncombe, Henderson, Haywood, and Madison, as well as the sixteen municipalities in those areas, including all of the municipalities in Buncombe County. In addition to that, representatives from NC DOT divisions thirteen and fourteen, as well as representatives of urban and rural transit, in addition to a few non-voting members. The changes to this would, the new membership structure would change this to add in the Federal Transit Administration as a non-voting member and take away Transylvania County as a non-voting member. Transylvania County is no longer adjacent to the Asheville area, the Asheville urbanized area as designated by the Census Bureau, and so they are no longer going to be a part of the MPO's structure. The TCC, which is staffed by local staff such as myself, has a similar makeup with quite a few more names on there that I'm not going to read all of them for you. However, the changes would formally provide membership on the TCC as a voting member for the Land of Sky Rural Planning Organization. I would mention Buncombe County is, I believe, the only local government that is a part of both the MPO and the Rural Planning Organization. And then in addition, several more new non-voting members that would be included in this updated MOU for the TCC. Finally, the MOU updated to include a cost sharing information for how dues are paid. Currently, all counties pay into the MPO plus the city of Asheville. Currently, Buncombe County pays the dues for the remaining municipalities in Buncombe County other than Asheville. And it also clarifies how there is access to local planning funds that Buncombe County, as well as the others, have used in the past for local studies. With that in mind, the next step would be to bring this to the board next month and for consideration and approval. Are there any questions on the MPO MOU?
How much are dues?
I believe they're fifty-three thousand dollars this past year for all of Buncombe County and the five municipalities. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to stay here for the next one. Just one second. Thank you. FTA Section 5307 Transit Funding, just a quick overview of that. I'll side note, for those of you who were with us in July, this is more or less a repeat of a presentation given over the summer, but with a few updates for the next fiscal year. So we'll look at a comparison of budgets between us and the city, directions that were given to the city of Asheville, a review of what the board approved this past summer, and what we should consider for the next year. Broadly speaking, 5307 is urbanized transit funding that we can use for equipment, operating costs, as well as to plan for our system itself. There is an annual allocation to each urbanized area in America, and within the local one, Buncombe County gets roughly a third of the fifty-three oh seven dollars. The city gets almost half, and Henderson County receives the remainder of those funds. This past year, I believe we had a little over a million dollars, maybe one point one million dollars in our annual allocation. The trouble we are having here in Buncombe County is our ability to spend down these dollars has remained relatively flat in recent years, but our allocation has been increasing every year. As it stands right now, we are able to spend about a half million dollars on eligible funding, which is pretty much served by Mountain Mobility's Trailblazer routes. These are our deviated fixed routes that extend, that connect to the city, three of the city's routes, and extend to the northeast and the west. But as this allocation amount increases, our, we thus need to sort of keep abreast, keep up with those as the, as those go up. This is just a quick overview of our comparative budget with the city's transit budget. Mountain Mobility costs roughly six point six million dollars versus the city's fourteen and a half million. The important thing there is the blue pie piece. For Buncombe County, over half of our budget is, comes from grants, whereas it is roughly a quarter for the city. As such, we are able to work a little more easily within our existing structure, whereas they often have more of a budget crunch, given, as you can see by that green pie piece, a great deal of their transit budget is in fact coming from local revenues and, local funds, excuse me. Every three years, the city is required to go through what is known as the FTA triennial review, where the federal government reviews all elements of a transit system, including how they spend money and allocate it appropriately. They were given, the city was given multiple directives regarding these fundings, including to reduce the open grants and to program unallocated funds. I should briefly mention, this was additionally impacted by the COVID funding under CARES and ARPA, and which has complicated this somewhat, but nonetheless, the city has been told by the federal government to reduce these open grants and to go ahead and program the unallocated funds. This past summer, the board approved a measure to rescind one point, nearly one point four million dollars to the city of Asheville with several requests. The first was not to ask for additional funding to support Route 170 and the New Leicester Highway extension. For several years, we have rescinded funds to the city in support of those two routes, and so part of the request was to not ask for more, or for this to be inclusive, anyway. The second was for the city to rescind to us some separate funding that Mountain Mobility is able to use relatively easily. And then the other two requests were evaluations of existing routes. One, that would better connect with the Buncombe County's, is that a drum? With Buncombe County's Inca Handler Trailblazer route to the west? And then finally, to increase trip frequency for the S3 and S6 routes, which serve Arden and South Asheville. I will actually, I don't think I have this in there. We requested an update from the city on the status of that, and I got that this morning. And all it is to say is, the city this past fall allocated six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those one point four million to purchase a new bus. Additionally, they used some three hundred thousand dollars to help offset impacts after Hurricane Helene. And they are currently in the process of developing a comprehensive operations analysis for which those two service changes will be evaluated accordingly. So the funds that we, that were rescinded by the board last year to the city were because they were at risk of being retained, returned to FTA. And so rather than them leaving Buncombe County and Asheville, we rescinded them to the city. This year, we have fewer dollar funds that are liable to expire, but they, these are the two amounts. The first is the annual allocation, I want to say from 2020, or maybe it was 2019. And the second is a program that we applied for in the amount of eighty-one thousand. So some eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars are at risk of being returned to the federal government, should we not program them. So with that in mind, there are, of course, the opportunity for Buncombe County to make further requests of the city, should we rescind those funds to them. Some that, the listed ones here are essentially the same as last year's, to not ask for further funds in support of Route 170, and I believe it's the WE-1, which goes to New Leicester Highway, to not apply for the 5310 traditional funds, which we, we Buncombe County will be applying for next month. And then we maintained the evaluation of the two existing route connections, excuse me, the route connection and the expanded frequency of the southern routes. That said, the board may ask for any requests of the city that advance transit and transportation within the area. With that in mind, we will be bringing this request to rescind the funds to the next meeting, and consideration of any approval will be asked of you. And if there are any questions or requests that you would have us include for the next meeting, happy to hear those.
Are there any questions? All right. Thank you so much, William.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you back on the fourth. All right. Our last agenda item, and I think we may have some open discussion. Commissioner Sloan, I'll start with you, because I know you have some discussion, and then anyone else does.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real fast, I handed out a paper copy to the board here of a resolution in support of the eastern hellbender and its potential listing as an endangered species by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. On December twelfth of 2024, the USFWS announced a proposal to list, to list the hellbender as an endangered species, and they're seeking public comment right now. And I drew up this resolution, and at some point after today, I'll be seeking your support to include this on our next available agenda in February. But it's simply a resolutions of support of the federal government's actions to list the hellbender that was already threatened, but just coincidentally even further threatened by Hurricane Helene, and would ask your support for that and sending that to our congressional delegation as well.
Are there any questions for Commissioner Sloan?
Commissioner Sloan, do you know if other jurisdictions have recently moved this forward?
Yeah, there's a couple, I think, in Watauga County, and there's been some others in the southern Appalachians outside of North Carolina as well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Are there any other discussion items before we adjourn? There being none, we will adjourn our briefing and see you all back at 5:00 PM. We adjourn.